Calling to order the Monday, February 3rd, 2020, regular meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henan?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Terbrack?
First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Madam Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the following change, removing item 11, "Closed Session" from the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Pastor Tal Sullivan.
Let's pray. God, it's a privilege to come before you and to invoke your name and your blessing, God, in this meeting and over our city, over our public servants, over all of the residents and business owners. God, we do not want to live without your blessings. And so, we ask that you would bless us here in Berkeley. Give us wisdom with decisions that are made. Give us the ability to work with each other and to work through disagreements and difficulties in a way that is pleasing to you. And we ask, God, that this time tonight would be honoring to you with the way we conduct ourselves. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is citizens' comments. You may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Okay, seeing no citizens' comments, I'm going to close that. And I would like to thank Andy Meisner for joining us here tonight, our county treasurer. I'm sure there are things that you want the residents of Berkeley to know and all of us here in attendance. We'd love to hear.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor Protem and distinguished members of the council. It's good to be here. And I think this is my first visit since we've got some new faces. And what a nice thing to see. So again, I'm Andy Meisner. I'm the county treasurer. Berkeley High School graduate, I guess, is the claim to fame that matters the most. But I wanted to just briefly share a few items of some urgency. The most urgent matter is that March 31st is the deadline for property tax foreclosure in Michigan. So we're trying to get the word out to as many folks as we can that if you know somebody or anybody watching, you know somebody that could be in tough financial straits, that now is the time to connect with the treasurer's office. We have resources that are available to help. We've got a really friendly team. And we want to work to solve any issues, which we can do through a number of resources. One of the leave-behinds is a fold-over that describes the three-year property tax foreclosure process in Michigan. And it's also got some of the organizations that we work with to assist folks with free financial counseling, help with credit repair, housing counseling, work wrestling with their mortgage company if they're having challenges like that. And then also, some small business counseling as well. And I want to thank Councilman Ross Gavin for his distinguished service in our office as a deputy treasurer for how many years have you survived?
Six.
Wow.
He's coming.
Get this poor guy a drink or something. And so, the flyers are left behind as well as my business card. But you know, the unemployment numbers are good nationally, but there are still a lot of people in our community that are being left behind. And a lot of people that are not participating in the economy as fully as we would like them to. A lot of times, it's just a question of connecting with the right resource, right easy person to talk to and work through some of their financial challenges. And so, that's what we do through something at our office called the Financial Empowerment Center. And it's a free service available to everybody in Oakland County. The meetings are one-on-one. They're discreet. And so, it's just a place where you can talk with a professional about what's going on and get a game plan, whether, like I said, if it's a delinquent tax issue, you're getting on a payment plan, or getting connected with something called the Step Forward Michigan Loan Rescue Program. And that's a program that's open right now that will pay up to $30,000 of somebody's mortgage and/or property taxes if they are in a tough financial situation. And we've helped over 1,000 families, I think it is, councilmen in Oakland County, in communities just like Berkeley, who have just kind of fallen on hard times, get this kind of assistance that has allowed them to maintain home ownership. And that's what the program is all about. I did want to just briefly share some statistics for Berkeley. And you know, I think, as you well know, the Berkeley real estate market has recovered from the recession with real gangbusters. And Berkeley was never a hotspot for tax foreclosure during the recession. We had a little uptick here. But I'm glad to say that in years 2016 through 2018, there were zero tax foreclosures in Berkeley. There were two last year. And we currently have got just one property on payment plan. We've got seven plans out there that we'd like to renew. And we're still trying to connect with six parcels. And so, if that's a principal residence, in the next month or two, they're going to get a friendly knock at the door from their county treasurer and say, hey, I want to give you an invitation to work with us to get through this challenge so that no property is lost. And then, just switching gears real quickly, I wanted to thank Berkeley for its participation in our local government investment pool. And those are local dollars that we manage on behalf of over 40 local governments in Oakland County, so that you don't have to maintain a full-time investment professional. City manager's got enough on his plate right now, as does the finance director. And so, placing some funds with our LGIP has produced a respectable $36,064.40 of alpha or return that, you know, pay, what is that, maybe a half of a police officer, maybe? Or just a little bit to help out instead of just parking that money in an overnight money market. So, some of the ways that we're partnering with the City of Berkeley. And we appreciate your partnership and appreciate this community's leading the charge in Oakland County around making a great place to live and nice walkable downtown. And you guys have everything going on that helps make Oakland County an even more special place. So, thank you for that. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. I thank you for your presentation and your service, not only to Berkeley, but to the county. What are some of the other outreach mechanisms that you and your team are using to get to folks? It's hard to believe, but not everybody watches these city council meetings, right? There's probably a few that you'll miss tonight. What are some of the other ways?
No, you know, it's a great question. And especially as we get into this cellphone world and things get so digital, you know, we've tried to go with that. And so, in addition to some of the traditional methods, like, you know, coming out tonight, you know, we also do certified mail, home visits. And then, we've also started, is it a texting program? And trying to reach people over the cellphone. And we've actually, you know, jumped on social media, I think, from time to time if we've had trouble, you know, connecting with somebody. But you know, it's such a kind of a digital age that we've tried to adapt government to that speed of doing things. And then, you know, a lot of word-of-mouth as well through local governments, houses of worship, you know, that sort of thing. We'll go anywhere and do anything to prevent a foreclosure as our MO.
Well, that's awesome. Thank you for your efforts to that regard.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the question. And my cellphone is still 421Andy. It's 248421Andy. And it's on the card. But encourage anybody with any questions, or if anybody wants to hear more about some of the resources that we talked about tonight, then I would love to hear from you.
Thank you so much for being here. Thanks for coming and sharing all this great information. And we really appreciate your time.
Okay. Well, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 38th Special City Council meeting on Thursday, January 23rd, 2020. Two, warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1346.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
By Councilmember Blanchard, with support from Councilmember Henan. And are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Moving on to the regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, we will move on to item number two, please.
Presentation. Presentation by the Detroit Institute of Arts regarding the City of Berkeley's participation in the Inside Out 2020 program.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. We're very excited this year that we were selected for installations of several of the DIA's beautiful pieces of artwork through their Inside Out program. So, come this summer, as people traverse all the great things that Berkeley has to offer, in addition to all of our regular great stuff, we'll also see pieces of artwork provided throughout. So, the DIA has come here and graciously decided to give us an update on all the great things going on.
Excellent. Thank you. And I believe we have Amanda Harrison Keely?
Yes. Sorry. No, that's okay. It's like the boys' names. Honorable councilmembers and Mayor Protem, thank you so much for having me here this evening. I really appreciate you taking the time. I know it's a full agenda tonight, so I'll move quickly. As you've already mentioned, Berkeley has been selected to participate in our Inside Out project this year. And we also have another project going on in Berkeley. It's through our PIPA, which is Partners in Public Art Projects. And I will talk just a little bit about that. But I'd like to start with just what a national treasurer the Detroit Institute of Arts is. I'm sure you're all familiar with the importance of our collection. But we're actually ranked in the top five encyclopedic museums in North America. And that's a very important distinguishment to make, because we have some really important pieces in our collection. We were the home to the first Van Gogh to enter North America. You can see it up there is his self-portrait. We're also very well-known for Diego Rivera's mural industry painting, industry murals, excuse me, and Bruegel's The Wedding Dance. This is a 500-year-old piece that's been riddled with controversy and also played a very important role during the Detroit bankruptcy for the DIA. And I think as of last week, we're very well-known for Kermit the Frog, so I wanted to include him in there as well. So, I'll start by talking a little bit about Inside Out. We have several pieces that will be going throughout the community. And Dan Hill and I went through your town the other day, and he showed me all the highlight pieces, places to go. I think several pieces are going to go in the parks. We looked at the community center. We also considered the library. These are all still pending approval right now, but we're hoping to get artwork across the community with a mix of businesses and your public institutions. So, we're excited for the Inside Out program, because this is the first year that we're actually expanding it. So, historically, like last year, for example, we had five installations throughout Oakland County. This year, we're excited to say that we have 11 in the different communities around Oakland County. And we've also expanded it to include indoor installations. So, we have installations at DTW, if you ever go to their north terminal at the airport right now, and Secretary of State's throughout the tri-county area as well. So, we've also included new pieces of art, which I didn't want to show you yet, because I would give it away. But we just wanted to say thank you for having us in your community for the Inside Out project. And also, we met just last week, I believe, with members from Articipate. And we've worked very closely with Debbie and a committee there to, Debbie will, of Articipate, will be sending out a survey. We're going to ask your community what type of art project they would like to see in Berkeley. That might be a mural adding to the beautiful collection I know you already have here in the community. Or it could be a sculpture, or some sort of public art that the DIA would work with, Articipate, to help facilitate that project after we get feedback from your community members. So, that will be moving along. And I'm sure you'll see renditions and concepts moving forward. We want to help capture the spirit of Berkeley in this artwork. So, I'm excited to get the survey results back in for that. And then, maybe you'll have us up for another update, once we get more selections. And I also wanted to let you guys know what's going on at the DIA right now. We have Detroit Collects, a special exhibit. This is a collection of African-American artists, all belonging to private collections that are on display right now at the DIA. And we also have Bruegel's The Wedding Dance Revealed. I talked a little bit about this painting earlier. It really explores the science behind conservation. This is a 500-year-old piece, and it still looks fabulous. And the work and effort that our conservation department puts into maintaining it, as well as how pieces change along the years. So, if you're interested in that, I encourage you to come. These are free exhibits for you to enjoy right now. And then, coming up, we'll have guests of honor, Frida Kahlo and Salvador Dali, just opening this week. People always ask, well, you have Berbera Diego. Where's your Kahlo? So, we're really excited to be having a piece by her, or several pieces. And these will be accompanied by photographs from the industry mural when it was being painted. So, it'll be in conjunction with that. And then, coming up in June, we have Van Gogh in America. This will have over 65 pieces of artwork from Van Gogh, including the self-portrait, which is in our permanent collection. And it's really a celebration of the fact that he was, we were the first in North America to have a Van Gogh painting, and we're very proud of that. I wanted to mention that we've had 2 million visitors since 2012. And I'd love to credit all of our free exhibits to this number. But it's really because in 2012, our Oakland County approved a millage, .2 mills, to fund and offer free admission to anyone living in Oakland County. And that's really contributed to this number. Last year alone, we had 165,000 Oakland County residents come enjoy the DIA. We've also become a leader in education because of this. We've had 439,000 students since 2012. Last year, from Oakland County, we had 22,000 students come through the DIA. This is on free field trips that includes bus transportation and a tour, usually Visual Thinking Strategies workshop, which really helps kids engage with the artwork. We've also offered VTS, the Visual Thinking Strategies workshops, to our teachers within the schools. This helps build their communication and teamwork within the classroom. And we're actually expanding this project right now to reach colleges and universities as well, because it's been so popular. We've also been able to build really strong relationships with our senior communities. We offer Thursdays at the museum, which offers a bus trip to any group, 50-plus, with 25 seniors or more wanting to come down. And it's on Thursdays from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock. It always ends with a cookie and tea reception, which I think is everyone's favorite. But we have for the program either a lecture, like Great Lakes Shipwrecks, March 12th. I included this, because I thought maybe some people would be interested. It's a scuba diver, actually, who is one of the only ones to have dove the rocks of the Edmund Fitzgerald. And he's going to be doing a lecture. And then, participants will be invited to tour Michigan's Great Lakes. This is a photograph collection. The Great Lakes looking awfully calm in this photo, so kind of a contrast. But it's a fun exhibit that you are invited to walk through anytime. Really, it doesn't have to be for the program, but it was a nice tie-in for Thursdays at the museum. Last year, we had 89 senior groups come to the DIA for the Thursdays at the museum program. This is exceeding our commitment to the county, which is at 60 right now. So, we're not only exceeding our commitment to our county, but we're meeting a demand that's there, because people want to come and they have fun at these programs. And we really feel proud of the relationships we've built with these community members. And then, Partners in Public Art. I wanted to just talk a little bit more about this. This is a mural that was done in Clarkston. Last year, we had one done in Claussen. And this year, Berkeley was selected. You might not want a mural. It might come back as a sculpture. We'll see. But we're really excited to see what we can do to embody your community through this project. We also offer drop-in art-making workshops. So, I know you have so many different events throughout the summer. If you wanted the DIA to come and be a part of that, we can do, we can facilitate art-making on the site. So, it's a fun activity for families to enjoy. And then, Inside Out. This is a project that I've already talked a little bit about, but this has been made possible through that millage. And we've had 157 participating communities since 2012. And that's just growing so rapidly. Like I said, we've almost doubled in size this year to meet that demand. And none of this would be possible without our volunteers. I feel like the volunteer base at the DIA is really a core. We have 600 to 700 volunteers. 200 of those volunteers are all trained docents, so they are actually able to take you on tours throughout the DIA to touch on the highlights within that collection. And those docents will also come to your community to offer a behind-the-scenes lecture. So, if your library or your community center wants an educational lecture on, I don't know, say, Degas, we could come and do that and facilitate that for you. And that's because of our volunteers. So, I just wanted to recognize them and the efforts that they include to make the DIA a really special place. And just to recap, this is made possible with the millage that offers the free admission, free field trips, senior programming, and community partnerships. And I would be remiss to not mention that we do have a millage vote coming up on March 10th. The language is to renew the existing millage that we have with you right now. So, if you have any questions, I would love to hear from you. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you very much. Thank you for walking us through so many great accomplishments and achievements that the DIA has achieved recently. It's awesome. And my wife and I will be there on Saturday for the Oscar-nominated documentaries, and we'll be renewing our membership. But I actually did have a question in here.
Please.
If you could, again, recap the approximate timeframe for the Inside Out in terms of decision-making, when we approximately might see some installations, and for how long will they be installed?
Absolutely. So, right now, we have the contracts out with our partner, Dan. And I know he's working diligently to get those back to me February 7th. So, once I have those contracts returned, we place the frame order and get things moving on our end, so that way they'll be installed in May. Once we are closer to May, and we know kind of what the weather is doing and a timeframe, we'll give him exact details as to when and where we'll be in the community. And that, you'll see that in May, and then they'll come down in November. So, it's one installation, whereas in the past, we've actually done two, a spring and a summer. This is just one, one time.
Right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Amanda, for coming and talking about this. It's really exciting. And just wanted to give a thanks to Dan as well for really, you know, pushing this through and the application, everything like that, and some bugging from your friendly neighborhood councilmen. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here with us tonight. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please read number three on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-820, matter of authorizing Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers to conduct a 5K run on Sunday, October 4th, 2020, from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., beginning at Hurley Field at Anderson Middle School. During the event, representatives of the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers will provide volunteers to assist with the event.
Is there a motion to approve M-0820?
So moved.
Support.
Councilmember Gavin, with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, ma'am. Your memo includes, or your packet includes a memo from our public safety director, as well as route information, the copy of the event application. This has been, this event has been an absolute pleasure to bring into the community. It's been going for several years now. Tim and his team is always very well-prepared, as you'll see, as reflected in this document here. And again, a recommendation, not only from public safety, but from any of the appropriate departments, I recommend that we approve this.
Thank you. Any discussion from council?
Yes. I just wanted to say that my family and I participated last year, and it was a fantastic event. It was very inspiring to hear some of the stories about Stephen Siller and other wounded and fallen heroes. And I feel that it was an honor to support the cause and to, it was incredibly well-organized. And I'd like to just give my support for them to continue here in Berkeley. We're lucky to have the event.
Thank you. Yes. Anything you would like to add? Anything that we need to know that maybe is different from previous years, or?
Yes. No, thank you so much. My name is Tim Aitken. I'm one of the co-directors. And new this year is Christine Phillips and Orlando Vallejas. They're going to be helping this year. We just want to make the coming year a lot more bigger, just keep growing. Last year, in 2019, we raised about $60,000 for wounded veterans and their families. We want, we've got big goals. We want to double that. Get around 500 runners is what we want to look for. But what I want to tell you guys is we, two weeks after the run, we got the course, U.S. Track and Field Certified, which puts us into the, like, we can get the serious runners to come out, to qualify for their, you know, the runs that they want to do. But the good news is, is that anybody, any run in the city that uses that same route around Hurley Field and neighborhood can use it. I think it's good for about five years. But so, just want you to know that other runs in the community can use that. And you guys are just an amazing partnership. We go to a lot of conventions with the foundation in New York, where various runs throughout the country come. And we are just so fortunate to partnership with you, just to make the run that great. And it's a really good textbook run for the National Foundation, just a really good community. So, thank you so much for all your support.
Sure. Any other discussion or comments? Yes, Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a comment that, as the nitpicker on a council that goes over all these events.
Yeah, no, that's good.
You've done a fabulous job on this. Everything looks good. In fact, I emailed you with a question, and you got right back to me. So, and for everybody's knowledge, they're planning ahead. This event is October 4th.
Nice.
So, it gives us plenty of time to make sure we've got everything done correctly. So, I appreciate that. So, thanks for what you do.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll share those sentiments. I appreciate you coming back and look forward to a terrific event. And given that this isn't until October, and that you have everything kind of laid out, could you share a little bit about some of the reminder outreach that you'll be doing as we get a little closer? How will people know about it? Registration, all that kind of good stuff? Maybe put a plug in for your website, or whatever?
Yes. So, right now, what we do is we will build a website, and we'll have a talk right- and we'll have a talk right now. It'll probably be in a month or two when that will go. And it'll be at tunnel2towers.org with the number 2. And then there's a list of the national runs in there, and it'll be Berkeley. And then you'll be able to register really, really quickly and easily that way. In the first part of the year, we really focus on sponsorship and go into the community, finding sponsors, small businesses, large businesses, that kind of thing. That's what we want to do first. And then we usually, in the July timeframe, have a big, around July 4, a big campaign to drive runners. And there's usually a discount associated with the 4th of July for that. And then just recruiting volunteers organically. You can register online to volunteer. Obviously, there's no cost to that, but it just gets us into the system so that we can communicate. We have a group of about 10 kind of key people that we all divvy up our jobs and tasks that we need to do. And that group just keeps getting tighter and a little bit bigger, too, of what we need to do. And then working really closely with you guys and the Berkeley Public Safety, locking in. One thing, too, we are looking into is trying to have food this year, maybe trying to do that. That's a preliminary thing we're looking into. So sponsorship in the beginning, and then volunteering sort of in the middle. And then the last couple of months are just race day logistics. So, I don't know, do you guys have anything to add? Am I missing?
Yeah, hi, I'm Orlando, new to, not new to the foundation, but new to the co-race directing. And Tim actually brought me on to help with the running community. So one thing that the foundation does really well, I think, right now, is getting the word out about why it exists and why it's important and all of that. But this is a running event, and we feel that the best way to support the foundation is to really engage with the running community. So one of my focuses has been trying to really penetrate the forums, the blogs, and the different places where runners are at to try to drive that community into our race. So if we can effectively do that, if anyone here is a runner, you know that there's about 10 to 20 sign-up type websites, right? So we're going to be all over that. And we're looking to try to get as many enthusiastic people up to the event as possible because we really feel that that's the best way to support the foundation from an organic standpoint.
Great.
As a follow-up question, you mentioned sponsorship. If you haven't already had the opportunity, perhaps outreach to our Chamber of Commerce. They're very active in being able to support things. They have regularly scheduled chamber chats and things where people can get together and meet. You might be able to find some, get some traction with some folks through that friendly forum.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Great suggestion. Anybody else? Thank you so much for coming, and we look forward to the event. We're happy to have you here in Berkeley. And welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-0820?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-920, matter of authorizing the mayor to execute a third-party specialized services operating assistance contract between SMART and the City of Berkeley for public transportation services primarily designed for senior citizens and persons who are handicapped. The contract period for this program is from October 1, 2019, to September 30, 2020.
Is there a motion to approve M-0920?
Motion to approve.
Support.
By Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Baker.
Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, ma'am. Your packet includes not only the contract itself, but also a memo from Parks Recreation Director Theresa McCarlton, calling attention to the date received because annually, this comes up. Annually, SMART tends to be late on this. So I just want to call attention to, as the director did, to the date-received portion of the memo, as well as the contract amount. And Theresa and her team do a fantastic job of making this project go a very long way in the city and making sure it's a fantastic service.
Thank you. Theresa, anything you'd like to add?
Good evening. You see me twice a year for SMART renewal contracts. So I'm kind of a broken record, but I'm happy to be about a program that is so successful and that means so much to a lot of our seniors. When Amanda was talking about the DIA, we use our own transportation to take them down there. We have used their programs as well. But, you know, I mean, what we use our SMART vehicles for is so important. It's the daily transportation to grocery stores. It's the daily transportation to doctors' offices, you know, to get their hair done. It's also trips. It's trips to go to lunch. It's trips to go see things downtown. It's all types of things. So it's definitely a program that we're happy to continue to run. Four years ago, we found out that we were getting a new SMART vehicle for a lot of reasons that are not SMART's fault. That vehicle has been delayed for all communities, but we are finally getting it, we believe, this spring. So we're very excited about that. Our mechanic is also very excited about that. We have a van that we are very much looking forward to replacing with a new vehicle. We replaced our diesel a couple of years ago, and it's been great for us. And then we also have our 26-passenger. So what these funds are for, this amount has stayed the same this year, as well as our community municipal credits, which went up just a small amount. Again, for seniors that live in the City of Berkeley, they can call up to one to two days in advance. We usually ask for 48 hours. But if it is a day in advance and we're able to get them on our schedule, we will. We schedule transportation every morning from 9:00 to 11:30. And then, obviously, we take seniors again. Our boundaries are 8 to 16 mile in Los Artic winter. So I'm happy to answer any questions. But you guys see me here the same thing twice a year so that we can get these funds from SMART. And then we continue to keep up our obligation to SMART, which is our weekly and quarterly and monthly reporting in order to continue to receive the funds that we do. And we're incredibly grateful, and they're a great partnership for the community.
Good. Any discussion from council or comments?
It's great to get free money.
Yes. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, since they're four months late getting the contract to us, I wonder if they'd mind if we spent four months to get it back to them.
It's a big organization, you know? So it's a big organization. But again, with municipal community credits, they're usually running about a month behind. And specialized services, for some reason, is a couple of months behind.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Ms.
Okay, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M-0920?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-1020, matter of authorizing Hubble, Roth, and Clark HRC for engineering design services related to the 2020-2021 Road Improvement Program at a cost not to exceed $65,234 from the Road Millage Fund, account number 313-938-821-000.
Is there a motion to approve M-1020?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Gavin.
Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, ma'am. Your packet includes a memo from Public Works Director Derek Schuler, as well as the HRC breakdown of the project, noting attention to the schedule for 2020, as well as the number of yellow dots on the map. You'll see that there's a very widespread across the community. Lots of our voters are going to see their dollars at work across the city. And we're really excited to get this project off the ground and get some, literally some investment into the roads and the infrastructure. So, but Derek's here, as well as Eddie Zimich from HRC.
Great.
Good evening.
Mr. Schuler?
So it's time. We had the successful Road Millage back in late 2018. So we finally have some funds to work with. So 2020 will be year number one for actual construction. And as we discussed in many of those public hearings and meetings back in 2018, many of you were a part of those meetings. The first step in the plan, what we've always talked about, is doing a comprehensive, city-wide, full-depth replacement program. We recognize the need for that. We are able to touch hundreds of locations. I believe we've designated between 150 and 200 locations already. So that's going to be our first step, is to do some of these full-depth permanent patches. And then, in subsequent years, we'll look for full-road reconstructs, which we know we need to do as well. Those projects are very expensive, as we all know. Harvard reconstruction, as a reminder, that half-mile stretch of road and water main was over $2 million. And we're generating just over $1 million per year with this millage. So just to put everybody kind of in context. So our initial thought was, in the first year, to do a comprehensive road repair, patching program, full depth. And that's what we're going to do. We had HRC go out this summer and rate all of our roads, the PESER road rankings, which we were lucky enough to get a grant for. During the course of HRC's driving and rating of all 50-some miles of road, we asked them to sort of note some locations for this particular job. So the technician that was involved, the engineer that was involved, noted those locations. And then he went back there over the winter to get some more finite numbers, put some more estimates together. And in the course of doing that, we realized the scope, which wasn't a huge surprise. We didn't just have $1 million worth of stops to make, but there was really closer to $2 million worth of stops to make as far as this patching is concerned. So it was our thought that probably the best course of action at this point is to do the same program in 2020 and 2021, hopefully under the same bid, and do that work. So the first two years, we would be working on those 150, 200 locations around the City of Berkeley. So before you tonight is the design proposal to get that out on the street and to bid out this project publicly, again, with the start of construction this summer. And then we'll also be doing work in 2021 as well, following suit. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Price?
Combining those, doing one year after the other with the bid process, does that save the city money to put it under one bid?
We do save some engineering dollars in doing that. And I do want to be clear that HRC, we've talked about this on a few occasions, we're going to write the contract such that, you know, if we have a not-so-positive experience with the contractor, we want the ability to not go into year two, obviously. But by the same token, we want to be able to lock in those prices. So we're going to word the contract to give us the flexibility to move into Phase 2, if you will. We won't have to go out a bid again. Again, as long as they meet their obligations in year one and we're comfortable with the quality and the results, then we would save some engineering dollars that way.
Fantastic, thank you.
Councilmember Raker?
Thank you very much, and thank you for your diligence in this. Obviously, those of us that need to get from point A to point B around here certainly recognize the need for a lot of this stuff. As we get closer to construction time, what will be the general approach to communicating to the affected neighbors and nearby homes and things like that so that they are excited rather than surprised?
So we've talked about a few approaches. And I think a mixed bag is probably the best approach, as with anything. Website, we've talked about some sandwich boards. The city manager has talked about that, where we create some boards to put out beforehand, showing your tax dollars at work. I view the website, again, being that primary component as far as scope, schedule, contact phone, that sort of thing, similar to other infrastructure projects. Obviously, the thing with road, if we're going to impact a driveway, for instance, where somebody is not going to be able to use their driveway for a period of time because that possibility certainly exists, there needs to be some direct communication, and we will be working with them directly on that issue. But I envision working with Torrey, eBlast, website notification. We'll make sure folks know before we get there, for sure.
Yeah, that sounds great because then people can plan around it, especially as you kind of work through the schedule for when the sequence from one street to the next, in case somebody has a family gathering or something, they can understand how the parking might be affected by that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, a few questions. I've had some people asking me, why are some of our worst roads? Why are there not dots on those generally asphalt roads? Do you?
Sure. And so I think we recognize that some of our worst roads from a PESER ranking are some of our asphalt roads, Wilshire, Kenmore. There's a few that come to mind that are going to be at the top of the list when it comes to reconstructs. And we recognize that, again, those projects are going to be significantly more expensive. So those are going to be on that reconstruct list. So this portion of the project is more focused on the concrete streets and those full-depth patches. And we'll look at those reconstructs in the future because those are going to be bigger jobs. We'll have water funds contributing to those. We're going to look at a lot of things when it comes to, what's the next road, like a Harvard? What's going to be our next reconstruct? We're going to be looking at the PESER raking. We're going to be looking at water main breaks. We're going to be looking at lead services, which is the new thing for us now. We'll be reaching out to residents very soon about trying to get more information on lead services in the inventory. I envision all of those things coming together to produce sort of our next reconstruct, which will be one of those roads, councilman, that you mentioned.
And there's a whole lot of dots on here, about 150 to 200. Do we think we're going to be able to get all of them?
So HRC ran the numbers. And so we'd like to believe that we're a little conservative. Obviously, it depends on the pricing that we see. But HRC and bidding projects can kind of take an estimate on what you're likely to see as far as unit prices to go. That will drive that factor. But we do believe that we're comfortably in place to meet these locations. I'd love to believe that we're going to come in under and be able to do even more in year two than we expected. Certainly, that would be a great thing for us as well. The goal is to spend the money and spend it on the roads.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. How are we going to progress through this? We're going to block by block, north to south, east to west? Is there a plan laid out to do that?
We haven't gotten that far yet, councilman. I imagine we'll try to break this out systematically as far as being in same locations because the contractor's going to want to know that. They don't want to bounce around with concrete either. So I imagine we'll tackle it on a section-by-section basis, but those have not been determined as of yet.
I notice some of these roads look like they're practically, there's some dots on some of them.
And the map is obviously condensed, 8.5 by 11. So that's a little bit deceiving. The point there is just to try to let people know how many locations there are. We're busy for a second.
There's a phone underneath here.
It wasn't for me.
The mayor was trying to conference in, I think.
Can't get away from telemarketers anywhere.
Anyone else?
Sorry, Derek.
That's right. And Eddie, I don't want to, I can't.
Eddie, you want to chime in here?
What did I miss? I think Derek's done a great job, pretty much covered everything. I guess just to touch on a little bit how we talked about, this is a two-year program. What we want to set it up, basically the intent is that the city will award to one contractor for one contract for the two-year period, although you're, what we recommend is you just authorize Phase One first and say, we will go through Phase One, and once we're, you know, it's complete, we approve everything, everything looks good, and then provided everything works well with the contractor, and even if, make sure there's enough funding left, you know, we could say whatever we want in the proposal, then at that time you would authorize Phase Two, and then they could begin that, you know, the following year. So we will have that set up, so there is some flexibility there for the city. If there's any issues along the way, that you can say that we're just going to rebid, you know, Phase Two at a later time, so.
Thank you.
Other than that, I think we pretty much covered everything really well.
Thank you so much. Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, great. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-1020?
Price? Yes. Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. And Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-120, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, approving the marijuana business license application evaluation point system to be utilized in evaluating marijuana business license applications.
Is there a motion to approve R-0120?
So moved.
My councilmember Henin, support?
Support.
From councilmember Baker. As you are all aware, this has been a topic of great discussion these past months, and we have one final section on the metric that's going to be discussed this evening. At the special meeting, council agreed that all other items on the metric were amenable to council, so our goal tonight is for council to discuss that item and vote on the resolution. The goal of this item is to ensure that we have the highest-quality operators with safe, state-tested supply. It doesn't do us any good to have an operator that can't open, or to have an operator that is not using state-certified supply, which cannot be verified if the supply only comes from caregivers. Council, our city attorney, public policy team will be making this decision. If you are a resident that has concerns for council, you are more than welcome to comment, but as has been our practice, if you are an applicant or representative of an applicant with recommendations that suit your specific business plan, please respectfully refrain from making any comments this evening. Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, ma'am. As you mentioned, we had locked in basically 25 down through nine at a previous meeting, so our focus turns now to the section that has a total of 26, but specifically an item that has been proposed for 16 points in our scoring matrix, which essentially asks an applicant to demonstrate that they have a supply chain lined up at the point when they are applying. So the intent here was to make sure that they could show that they were cert, they were working with a state-licensed cultivator, and that was what was going to, that product was what was ultimately going to be on the shelves per their business plan when this retail operation opens. And so that is, that's the wording that we're driving at. We followed up with Laura. Laura said that, yes, we could provide cultivation, the license number for a cultivating facility. Our interpretation of this will be that the grow facility, the cultivator, they will have been through the entirety of the state's process. They have received a license from the state. They won't be running parallel, like with the licensee, with a potential retailer, you know, that we're in the process of getting going, because, again, we want to make sure that when the day comes, when the grand opening sign comes out, that there is product on the shelf. And so as, at the point of application, we're simply asking an applicant to say, I'm working with this grower, here's his license number, here is his intent to supply me, and that will be reflected in the application process.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Schludow and Mr. Hill, what would you like to add?
I think Matt covered it perfectly.
We're just here to answer any questions if you have them.
Great. So I'd like to kick off this discussion and offer an amended version of, in the document that we all have that is highlighted in yellow. I would like to suggest that it could read, "has a supply with state licensed, with a state-licensed cultivation facility," period.
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
"Has a supply with state, with a state-licensed cultivation facility." Yes.
So, since I sort of jumped in anyway.
Do it.
So it says, "has a supply," so that means they could have more than one supply, only one of which needs to be state-certified? It's just how I would understand that language. If it says, "has a supply," that doesn't mean it has, the only supply would be different, right? Or ensures that all supplies, right? Words are important in all that.
Yes, no, they are. So perhaps, "has a supply with a state-licensed cultivation facility with certification that adequate supply will be readily available for sales upon the anticipated opening date of the marijuana business." So, but you're saying that all supply, because it could be...
Yeah, oh, I've got six, and only one of them, you know, as long as one of them has a license, then I'm good.
How would you like to see it?
I'm just getting a feel, was that our intent, to say every, every supply must be state-certified, or at least one needs to be state-certified? I'm just curious what our intent is before we, because, you know, then we could, it's easy to tweak the language to meet the intent.
Our intent, again, was to, to make sure that the potential retailer will be working with a state-licensed cultivation facility as far as the whole of the supply, a portion of the supply. Our goal is to make sure an operator has, has gotten to the point where they're, in their business planning process, where they have contracted with a state-licensed supplier, and they're, they'll be ready to open up the day of. I'm not sure if that falls into a supply or the supply, or if we, it doesn't, I guess it would not have to be a, I guess they could note that we have this agreement with this supplier with maybe alternatives as to how to supply if, say, we run out, or the supplier is, for some reason, not able to give the whole of the amount. That's not a scenario that which we've discussed moving into this. Again, we, our intent was to make sure that they will be able to open the doors, will be able to keep product on the shelf, will be ready to go day of.
Sure, thank you. And then the way I'm processing that, the language is written seems fine then, right? If we just want to ensure that the shelves aren't empty, that they have at least one supplier that's state-certified, and maybe they supplement that with others or whatever, this doesn't prohibit them from doing that, it's just as long as they have one that's state-certified. If we want to make it where every supplier must be state-certified, then, then we could, you know, tweak this to say, you know, 100% of the supply is, will be provided by a state-certified cultivation facility, if that's our intent, too. I'm sorry, it looks like he wants to cut into...
My question for staff, for the attorney, is, is it possible for there to be a supplier that is not state-certified?
I mean, it wouldn't necessarily be, you wouldn't necessarily get supplied directly from a state-licensed cultivation facility. There are ways in which other material can, can be sold, but legally verified and tracked through the state's metric system or through some of the other various needs. There's, again, there's a, essentially, there's an Amazon-style purchasing, I don't exactly how to describe it, but it's essentially, it's Amazon for cannabis products. Leaflink is a big one that's used, where you can go in, you can purchase off of there, but even then, it's tracked through the metric system that the state has, is making cannabis owners utilize. So I don't know, there is, there is a state verification in for, I think, each of the supplies. I know there's some issues with potentially caregivers selling excess into the system, but we want to make sure that at least the applicant intends to use a state-licensed cultivation facility for the bulk of its needs. If that answers the, long way to get to a short question.
I, I think what the city manager said is correct.
So then how will it read?
Well, I mean, has, has council come around yet on the question, are you satisfied with part of, or the majority of, or do you want the supply to be exclusively from, I should say solely from the state-licensed cultivation facility? We're looking for direction, then we can write it.
Okay, so how is council feeling about that? I mean, I believe when I first read this, my thought was, the intent was that supply would be coming from a state-licensed cultivation facility. Councilmember Henin.
I, I think the question we need to answer first is if we want any variant of this in the criteria, I do not think it's appropriate. I just do not think it is something that, as far out as they'll have to certify, and then they still have to get site plan review, and then they have to construct, this is a, this is a farm, you know, operation, and things can impact supply. Supply is constrained, there isn't a glut of this product on the legal market, that people are going to hold it for these folks for months or years. I just do not think this is, in any variant of it, a practical criteria.
To build on Mr. Henin's point, or councilmember Henin's point, it's actually accurate that this would be true at the point of application. And so the applicant certifies, at the point of application, this is who I intend to work with, but as noted, timelines change, business, potential vendors could change, but we want to make sure that an applicant has at least thought that far ahead. It dovetails very well with requirements to document, you know, how they intend to supply it, which is a pass-fail item in our process.
Okay.
So this is essentially making sure that now only do you have a supply chain written out in your business plan, but you have now a contact with a state-licensed cultivation facility. So this is a way of, an applicant can go above and beyond, but you're absolutely correct. Things could change in the months and potentially even up to a year between point of application and the doors opening in these facilities.
Other discussion, questions?
My comment is, like I said, this is a point in time in an application, and I think anybody's got a good business plan is going to have that in there. And now all we're asking for is that if you've got a supply set up in your business plan, that you are using a state-licensed facility. I think it's pretty simple. You can't say all, if you've got a business plan, does it identify a state-licensed facility that you're going to use? If so, okay. Shouldn't make it too complicated.
Councilmember Henin.
Yeah, and so part of what we're discussing is, we have the parenthetical, requires cultivation to submit affidavit affirming supply levels, and you're discussing striking that.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, really for the reason that you identified, councilmember Henin, is how, you know, what does that do for us, and how reliable is that? So I think the, by striking that, we make it very clear that our focus on awarding or not rewarding these criteria is, at the point of application, does this exist, or does it not? Because we can't, none of us have a crystal ball that will be reliable enough to predict what may happen in, in the future, that may or may not be within the applicant's control.
Then I think I am comfortable with this, that it does show that they are thinking it through, they aren't, it isn't a provider that's playing the lottery, let's see if we get the license, and then we'll figure the details out later.
Anyone else?
So, thank you.
So back to the question, I started with the A and all that stuff, and then to the city attorney's point about just declaring intent and they can figure out the wording. I'm kind of going through like the Goldilocks thing in my head right now, right? You know, having just a bare minimum of at least one, but you could have many more. It feels like maybe that's a bit too cold. If you require exclusive or uniquely, or, you know, singularly from all, then it feels like that might be a little bit too hot. So if we just kind of settle, I'm thinking in the middle, like a majority, or, you know, the majority of their projected inventory will come from a state-certified, one or more state-certified cultivators, or whatever the word is. It's kind of which way I'm leaning, but I could be, I could be swayed if you'd use a different fairy tale.
Councilmember Henin.
Some of my, my initial thought on that was, we just don't know the market dynamics of, of, is there enough? I think the statistic I read this, just this morning from this month was 63% of the marijuana being provided is through caregivers. I, that was in the article that was shared with all of us. I think that is the percentage that was shared. So, you know, if that's the case, it would be impossible for someone, possibly impossible for someone to get to a 50%, you know, threshold, a majority threshold from a cultivation facility.
Would there be a difference between state-certified or licensed under Laura? A distinction there? I mean, all of the supply needs to be regulated, right? So is there a...
So it would all come through Laura, and even, even caregivers are licensed through the state.
Through that department.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Councilmember Henin.
I think the key here is that we are just looking for that they have figured out where their product's going to come from.
Correct.
Yeah, and I agree with that.
So...
So maybe the proposed language stands, I just kind of wanted to ensure what we said, A, whatever, you know, that means could be one of many, and if that's where we're, if that's where we're at, that's...
I think that's right, as, as Mayor Pro Tem Dean stated it, we'll accomplish what we seem to be landing at, or landing on here.
So I'm going to read it again, just so that we're all clear. "Has a supply with a state-licensed cultivation facility with certification that adequate supply will be readily available for sales upon the anticipated opening date of the marijuana business," period.
I thought we were striking...
I thought we struck "requires cultivation."
After facility.
Uh, oh, okay. Are we striking, or is it just this sentence, "has a supply with a state-licensed cultivation facility," period?
That's what I thought you had.
That was your initial...
Okay, done. That's it. "Has a supply with a state-licensed cultivation facility." Any more discussion?
This doesn't limit us if we say A. We don't need to say at least one state-certified, right? Okay.
No, I, I think it's fine as stated.
Okay.
I don't know if we need to make a friendly motion, but I'm fine with that amendment.
Awesome. Okay, yes, I would entertain a friendly motion. So...
I'm fine with that change.
With that.
And I seconded last time, I'll second again.
Perfect. Perfect, okay. Mr. Baumgarten, are we, have we missed anything? Are we good here? Is there anything else that we need to...
Just one, as we move into the application process, which will be our next step, we're looking to get that out by the Valentine's Day and start accepting applications by the 16th of March. I do want to note, I don't want to, obviously changing the language that was froze at the previous meeting, but just want to note for the council's understanding, an interpretation of item number 17, which states that at least one stakeholder is either a current property owner in Berkeley, or is a current majority owner or stakeholder of an existing Berkeley business. We do anticipate a large number of our applicants to have purchase agreements with an existing property, but not have actually purchased the property itself. So the, the way that we're going to interpret the language with the consent of the governing body here would be that for this particular purpose, a, a purchase agreement for, to eventually purchase the property subject to a license being awarded to them, would not meet this standard. They would actually have to have ownership of this property to be awarded the 17 points specific to the Berkeley property owner portion of this. Just want to make sure this, note this as we move forward, as there is some ambiguity, given the, the number of months standard has been dropped, whether it was four or six in the past, now it's right up to the date of, and just want to note that, again, administratively, we'll be interpreting that as you have to have owned, you have to own the property at the point of application, not just have an agreement to do so later pending approval of the license.
Okay.
Councilwoman...
Thank you, I'd support that. As I read the language, it seems very clear, right? Is, is either a current property owner, I mean, that's pretty clear, doesn't mean I'm potentially going to be a property owner, but it's like, yep, I'm, I got, it's the real deal, so I support that interpretation.
And I would just like to, I guess, clarify, because the, the alternative, which is generally what the city accepts for almost all other purposes, whether it's liquor licensing, applications for rezoning, site plan approvals, or whatever, generally, it suffices when the applicant submits a purchase agreement, with or without a contingency, but a purchase agreement along with the concurrent of the legal property owner in the application. Usually that suffices for purposes of ownership. And what we're talking about here is being more rigid than that, and requiring somebody to have an actual deed or, or land contract in hand, and not just a purchase agreement. So I want to make sure council understands that distinction, and that's where you want to end up, because if we take the more rigid approach, that will end up depriving, if you will, a lot of the potential applications we are going to have, will deprive them from receiving it, and will actually give an advantage of those who, who already own property in the city. And that's fine, but it's, we, we need to weigh that against what our ultimate mission is here, or goal, which is it to land on the most qualified applicant, or is it to give some favorable attention or advantage to, to people who already own property in Berkeley, who, I mean, certainly that is, that is a positive attribute, but that does not necessarily land you at the most qualified applicant. You could have someone with virtually no experience, who owns property, who will get the points, but somebody who is coming in new to the city with, with lots of experience and wherewithal and a plan and all that, who would not get the point. So I just want to make sure in making this decision that you're weighing both sides of the, the issue.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I thank you for that additional clarification. I think that helps me be even more comfortable with this, because certainly it's just one of the items on the list, and maybe they'll do very well on some of the other items if they forego that. And also, there's opportunities to partner, right? Because it says at least one stakeholder, doesn't mean, you know, all of them or anything like that, so. But thank you for that additional clarity.
Councilmember Henin.
Yeah, that was my interpretation all along, wasn't aware, so I remain comfortable with this, wasn't aware of what sometimes legally... can be considered differently, and I might suggest that we do add to that to perfectly clarify our position, so that it isn't a point of future litigation. And I'm proposing adding, purchase agreements or similar mechanisms do not count towards the majority ownership criteria.
As of the date of the application?
As of the date of the application, yeah.
I'd love to hear the response from the city attorney on the language.
Could you repeat it once more, Councilman Hannon?
Purchase agreements or similar mechanisms do not count towards the majority ownership criteria. I don't know if the, as of the date of the application is necessary or not.
It's the same for all of them.
Yeah.
And that would be a parenthetical?
Parenthetical or an additional sentence, you know.
I mean, I think that's fine. It clarifies the council's intent.
So, I'm okay with that friendly addition to my...
Me too.
Is everyone okay with that friendly addition to item number 17? Okay. All right.
And set it with a smile.
Yeah. Okay. So, really, what we're, you know, voting on is the first item of discussion, right? Item number six, because this document was frozen last time, except for the, you know, 26, the part in yellow. So, that's the vote, right? Except now we've amended this.
Right, so the resolution would be adopting the standard as amended this evening.
Okay.
Yep.
We're good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on R.0120?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number seven on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance number O.320. Matter of considering the first reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend sections 138-584, 138-605, 138-625, 138-656, and add new section 138-552 to Chapter 138 zoning to establish requirements for public hearing notices.
Is there a motion to approve M.0320?
So moved.
With Councilmember Hannon, with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, ma'am. Your packet this evening includes not only the text of the ordinance itself, but also a memo from Ms. Luto, Community Development Director, outlining the work that's been done by the Planning Commission up to this point. And as a procedural note, this item has been advertised to the public for a period of one week, and has been in the possession of council for a period of one week, satisfying the rules of procedure for the city council, so it is open for adoption if the council were to wish to do so, or are open for a first reading if the council wished to do so this evening.
Okay. Ms. Luto?
Good evening. I'd like to reference my January 29th, 2020 letter. This is very similar to the memo that I wrote to the Planning Commission, just with the amendments noting the decision of the Planning Commission at the required public hearing. That was held at the January 28th, 2020 meeting. I went through and explained the purpose of the proposed ordinances. As you will note, there are four, there are currently four sections. Yes, there are currently four sections in the zoning ordinance that codify the requirements for a public hearing notice. Sections 138-584, 138-605, 138-625, and 138-656. Granted, all four of these sections are exactly the same, however, if there were to be any changes or alterations to one, it could, it's highly feasible that one of those might be missed inadvertently. Therefore, I'm proposing to codify a new section with these requirements, and in the ordinance regulations, proposed ordinance that I have drafted, I have also included a requirement that the notice be published on the city website, no less than 15 days prior to the public, date of the public hearing, as well as a temporary sign to be set up on the subject property of the public hearing, no less than seven days prior to the hearing date. We have been employing this policy and this procedure for quite some time now, since I've, before, it started before I began, and certainly have been doing it in the interim. We had a temporary sign that we had been using that just wasn't fitting the bill for what we wanted to do, and what we wanted to convey to the public. So, we do have the permanent temporary signs, if you will. I have those here for your, for you to look at if you would like to, and kind of see what we've been, what we've been doing. But this is the procedure that we've been going forward with, to make sure that we are reaching as many people as possible notice with these public hearings.
Thank you.
This, just one, this will not eliminate or lessen the state-mandated requirements that are laid out in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. These are just additional steps that we are putting into place to ensure that residents that are within the general neighborhood of a subject property, but maybe 303 feet away from that subject property, they don't get a mailed notice, or didn't see it in newspaper. This way, they're aware of it, of what's going on in their neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten.
I merely wanted to note that Ms. Luto has brought consistency to this practice, has made improvements on the visibility as far as the, and as you see, the content of the sign has really come a long way from what we're typically using. I think she's probably got a before and after to even show us. But just yet another good example of the positive improvements that Ms. Luto has made to the department.
That's the old?
Yes.
Yeah, that's definitely the old one. That's before.
This is the old sign, so what it was, is it looked just like this, very blank on the, and then it was taped with a piece of paper noting the date, the address, the request, the parcel number. As you can see, this one was subject to weather conditions that, you know, might prohibit someone from seeing it, and certainly not able to read from driving by. The new proposed or currently in effect signs are double-sided, and these are specific to the Zoning Board of Appeals and Planning Commission, and, thank you. So, these state very clearly that there is a public hearing on this property. It mentions the board in question, as well as a link to where they can find additional information. We've, with the help of Tori Mathis, our community engagement officer, yes, I had that right. We have created this page specific for this type of information, as well as the phone number, and where they can find additional information, or make phone calls to the city if needed.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion from council? Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you. This is, this is great. Thank you for the, just a couple of quick thoughts. The signs, I like the intent of those. They do seem to be a bit more durable. We're not always like taping up new things, it's just a straightforward thing. It would be remiss, as my liaison to the Technology Committee, if I didn't at least suggest that perhaps we add one of those QR code things, and one of those little barcode things that you can zap with your cellphone. For the residents and neighbors who are walking by, they can just go boop, and then, it helps if you make that noise, by the way. Yeah, and then it takes you right to the website, so they don't have to type it down, or take a picture of it, and try to do it later. So, just a minor suggestion, I don't know how many of those we've already printed up. Those are certainly fine, and it appears that it serves the purpose, but...
We can, I will absolutely make a note of that, and as the signs maybe need to be replaced or updated, then we can absolutely implement...
Sure, and you might get additional feedback on those. My other question wasn't directly related to signs, but the magic 300-feet thing. Is there, is there a science behind that? Is there...
It's a state law.
See, law says at minimum...
Well, that's exactly, and that's why...
So, I was going to see, could we go to four or five? What would be the disadvantage except for a couple extra stamps to go to five? I mean, if there's been extensive dialogue, I don't want to like overturn stuff, but I just want to see if we're, since we're working on this now, I was just curious if we could be intentional with ensuring that 300 really is the right number, as opposed to 302, or, you know, 400 or 500. I just was curious what conversation has taken place about that magic number.
Well, we hadn't had a discussion, either the state attorney, or the city attorney myself, about extending the 300-foot radius. 300 feet is what's mandated by the state. And I personally, I think if you're going to increase it, then 401, 501, you know, we're going to have to have a cutoff at some point, otherwise, we're going to notify the entire city every single time there's a public hearing by mail.
Correct.
And I think with some of these public hearings, there, because the city is so dense, we are reaching a large, a large area with the 300 feet. Anything more than that, it takes up a lot of time, a lot of postage, things of that nature. I think 300 feet is a, is a good number for this size of community, but again, we hadn't discussed it any further.
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to say, I'm certainly not looking to overturn conventional wisdom, or if there, like I said, if there was a science behind it. But I know our intent was to go above and beyond, and so to do the state minimum doesn't feel like above and beyond to me, so.
It has been the standard, not only in the current Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, but also in its predecessors that go back to the, like, 1930. And it's been 300 feet. It has never changed, nor am I aware of any, any effort to change it. It's just been accepted, maybe because nobody asked the question, but it's been accepted as the standard rule of thumb, if you will, for zoning approvals, I can speculate as to the theory behind it. I don't think there's any science. It's obviously somewhat arbitrary, but I believe the intent was that those are the folks who, within 300 feet, would be the ones who would perhaps be most concerned, most affected by whatever's going on with the premises, most familiar with it. And then when you start getting beyond that, then it's a far more generalized concern that, you know, would really be citywide, and not those most directly impacted. But again, whether, whether people at 299, you know, 299-foot radius are very concerned, but get the 301, they don't care. I mean, it, there is an element of arbitrariness, but, and I think there's also some practicality too, because there is some work that goes in. Yeah, it's postage, but there is some, some work in identifying the properties and so on, and, yeah, we could give direct notice to, to everybody within our municipal boundaries. But I guess the question would be, we're increasing the administrative work and the postage, but are we making our process any better, or just more difficult? And I don't know the, and I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, just to close out the thought. I certainly don't mean to trivialize the nature of, you know, doing the radial search, and like figuring out what houses are there, but it seems like if you're going to do it anyway, just making the arc a little bigger isn't that much harder, and it's a couple extra sheets of paper and stuff, but...
I think the thought is that we've had, at least internally administratively here, is the combination of all these things. The direct personal notice to those within the 300 feet, the newspaper advertisements, the posting on the website, and, and of course, the, the posting of the sign, which will catch anybody walking or driving by. We think that the, the combination of those should really be effective at reaching out to anyone who might be interested in providing input, or in following the proceedings. I mean, I suppose we could even go so far as to, you know, knock on people's doors, but again, at some point, you have to do, you know, what seems to be reasonable and practical.
That's, thank you, yeah, and I, I think I'm done with it. I just wanted to see if there was conversation, as we're trying to go above and beyond, to look at that as part of the equation. I certainly understand it's the longstanding precedence, and plus, there's word of mouth as well. So, if I'm at the 302-feet mark, probably my, I hopefully at least know my neighbor a little bit closer to that, and I might say, hey, there's this thing going on. So, I was just curious more about the process. Thank you.
Councilmember Price?
And I just wanted to clarify that it says that people within 300 feet must be notified, but this doesn't limit the city from only notifying.
No, that's, that's correct.
In the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee, we're always talking about, like, what are the bare minimums we want to require in our communications plan? But then there's always, for special projects, for something where more people we could tell would be affected, because it would be changing traffic patterns, or something else, we can always go above and beyond notifying, or communicating more actively with more people.
Sure.
We just aren't setting the standard that we must for every single situation.
That is correct, and this ordinance has drafted and proposed to you is a step in that direction, to go above and beyond the minimum state-mandated procedures.
Thank you. Councilmember Hannon?
Just some math trivia. If extending it 200 feet actually almost triples the area, so it is a significant cost difference, you know. When I'd originally started thinking about these things years ago, my initial thought was just increase the radius, but I do like, rather, the signs, the website, those outreaches. Two, two things I would like to see, I don't think they need to be in the, in the ordinance, a date on the sign, so someone knows what day this is hearing, and how much, oh, I've been procrastinating, I need to actually, you know, get my act together and do something now. And we had talked about this some, a plain English description, and I'm thinking of that specifically on the website. And I know the attorney's fear was if it is framed incorrectly, that that can become a point of litigation, so even just a disclaimer, this is just to help you, but you can't rely on this. Something, something like that. But for some people, you know, what does three feet, you know, encroaches three feet into a five-foot setback mean? You know, it just means they want to build three feet closer to the property line than normal, and, you know, putting it in plain English for people so that they can understand better, but also some boiler plant language that protects us legally.
I think what we can do, you know, with regard to the sign, we need to be careful about making it too busy unless we want to enlarge the sign. And I've seen variations from one community to the next. A lot of communities don't put signs up at all. Others do, and it's just real plain, like it'll say rezoning proposed, call for info, and just provide a number, or, or site plan pending, call such and such for more information. So, it's, it's, whatever you want it to do. I would suggest, as to Councilman Hannon's concerns, what, that the, the actual written notice that we provide to the people within 300 feet, that we make sure that we very closely adhere to the state law-required language. Courts tend to construe it strictly, but we can certainly supplement that. I mean, as long as we have the minimum in there, we can add, say, another sentence that, you know, setback variance requested for, you know, three-foot encroachment. This means that the applicant is seeking to construct a building three feet closer to the lot line. I don't think there's any problem supplementing, which is really what we're talking about doing here. I just don't want to substitute something different than what the state is mandating.
I agree with that, and I think, not even necessarily do we need to do that in the printed public notices in the paper, or in the mailed ones, but a link to that website, and then that can contain that information.
We can certainly do it that way.
And then, and then anyone without web access, there will be a phone number that they can call to ask anyway.
I was just going to note, from a, from a process standpoint, this is not an end point for us. The work of the Community Development Director, the work of our communication, our CEO, our Community Engagement Officer, the work of the CEAC, it continues. The work of the TAC continues. And so, just being able to add something new, but continue to, as I said earlier, supplement, continue to reach out more to people, continue to find new and best practices, that's a process that, I mean, even with, even has moved past this. We're already talking about certainly new ways of reaching people, and so I would, wanted to note it with council that we're not saying, you know, signs, you know, signs are in the ordinance, all right, everybody go home. We do continue to try to find new ways of reaching people, and utilizing a lot of what was discussed here this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I guess my suggestion probably does not need to end up in the version of the ordinance as well, but it's more just kind of a suggestion as it relates to the... as well, but it's more just kind of a suggestion as it relates to the mailing of the notice and also the publication of the notice. Can we look to add some language that the documents actually associated with the public hearing will not only be available for view on the city's website, as we've talked about, but hard copies placed in the city hall as well?
I believe they do currently.
Okay, I did, okay.
I don't have one in front of me, but I believe that they do reference that.
That's great. If they do, then that's wonderful. If they don't, then I would suggest that, just in case we're trying to find some folks that maybe aren't, you know, on the internet, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, I think we do that, and I think we probably have one or more copies available at the library, and, you know, in places like that to cover that for those who either don't have the technology wherewithal, or they just like doing it the old-fashioned way, as I do from time to time, where just print me a copy.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Rager?
Thank you. Just a question of clarification. The intent of these signs is to be reused from one project to the next until the physical state of the sign? So putting a date on it might get us back into the notion of having to re-tape stuff, so.
Yes.
It puts all the more value on ensuring that that website's up to date and they could easily, because if we have three of these things going on, they have to figure out which one to look at and all that kind of stuff. So I just wanted to clarify, in my own mind, the intent of the sign is to be reused until it is no more usable.
Right, and that's why they're specific for pub, excuse me, for public hearings, and they're not for any other business that would come before the Planning Commission, such as just a straight site plan approval. And they are specific to which board they're going before. So zoning Board of Appeals versus Planning Commission. That way to give someone who's driving by, an interested neighbor, direction on where to look on the website, instead of just saying, oh, there's a public hearing, well, which one? There are 17 of them, I don't know. This gives them a little bit more direction. But if we were to incorporate a date that changes from year to year, then we get into a situation where we end up taping or writing on the signs, and then that kind of negates the prettiness. We're just trying to incorporate the aesthetic we're trying to portray here.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we can somehow use Velcro, I don't know.
Velcro doesn't rust.
Okay, we good? Okay, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on, where are we, oh, 0320?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, please read item number eight on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance number oh, six, twenty, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to conditionally rezone property described as Lot 425 of the Vincetta Park subdivision from RM Multiple Family Residential to Parking District.
Is there a motion to approve oh, oh, six, twenty?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve Blanchard and support from Councilmember Baker. Okay, Mr. Baumgarten?
Mayor, Mayor Tom, just again noting this is a conditional rezoning. Those conditions are outlined in your packet, along with the text of the ordinance itself that the council will be considering, and a very robust email, or a very robust memo from Community Development Director as well, outlining really what's being requested here.
Okay. Ms. Ludo?
Yes, thank you. Hello again. I'd like to reference my January 29, 2020 review letter. This is very similar to the review letter that I had compiled for the Planning Commission with some updates as to their review and public comment. The required public hearing was held at the January 28, 2020 meeting. This is to conditionally rezone 1256 Franklin from RM Multiple Family Residential to Parking. If granted, the applicant is looking to pursue a marijuana business license, they are interested in developing the properties on Woodward that are immediately adjacent to this subject property, and they would then redevelop the subject property itself for parking to support that marijuana business. Several members of the public were present and spoke during the public hearing with split opinions, as well as a couple of email correspondence that we had received prior to the meeting. There were concerns that the parking, development of a parking lot would decrease property values to the adjacent properties, and then there were others who spoke in favor of it because it would then support businesses that are currently located on Woodward that don't have sufficient parking. So I outlined the conditional rezoning request in my review letter and the summary of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which permits conditional rezoning as a practice. The applicant has provided a conditional rezoning agreement. We've seen a couple of these in the course of the last couple of months, and there's only one condition that the applicant has set forward. It's noted in page two of the review letter. The rezoning designation as parking shall be contingent on the award of a Marijuana Provisioning Center license to Yellow Tail Ventures, Inc. by the City of Berkeley. If Yellow Tail Ventures, Inc. is not awarded a Marijuana Provisioning Center license within one year from the date of this agreement, the property shall revert to its former zoning designation as RM Multiple Family Residential. This agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney as well. There are, let's see, there are five standards of review that are included in this review packet. The Planning Commission voted by a vote of six to two with one voting absent member to recommend approval of the conditional rezoning to Parking. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Discussion from council?
No questions. If, Mr. Blanchard, did you have a question first?
I just have one. This rezoning to Parking, does that agree with our master plan?
It does. The future land use designates this property as general, commercial, and service to support those businesses that are currently located on Woodward. So our future land use map does support this type of land use.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, Henon, he did steal one of my items where I was going to answer that. But, you know, I did, I would rather this was just a normal rezoning request. I think from a planning perspective, though, that this property should be zoned Parking. It fits the context and it matches our future land plan, and so I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Thank you for your shepherding this through the process to get it to us tonight. I also will be supporting this. I do think it fits the needed character of the emerging Woodward corridor here, and it does seem to align with our plans, so, yep, this sounds good.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would also like to say that if this company does not get a license and this reverts back to RM, I think this sends a message to other potential developers in the area that the council may look favorably on rezoning this to Parking, not under a condition, because we do need it as Parking. It's Parking all along there, other than this one lot. But I understand the conditional, because we don't want to disadvantage the owner of that and make it Parking, and then he's got a residence on there, so.
That's right.
I think this will, if he doesn't get a license, it'll help incentivize some other developer to look at that property. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on, oh, sorry?
The applicant is here, if you had any questions that you would like to address to them. Anything?
Hi, my name is Chris Aiello. I'm the attorney of PEP, Yellow Tail, if you have any questions. John?
I guess I'll ask one. Thank you, Your Honor. Do we happen to know if the property directly next to what you want to make the parking lot is for sale?
To the south or to the northeast?
To the north, northeast.
It is not for sale.
No, okay.
The laundromat is not for sale.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Aiello?
Just want to clarify, is the applicant Yellow Tail or the property owner?
Applicant is Yellow Tail.
Okay. But the prop, does the property owner support this as well?
Oh, yes, they're all here.
He's actually here, and yes, he does support, and I believe there's a contingent purchase agreement.
Yes.
And I think someone has identified the reason why this is being presented as a conditional rezoning, instead of just conventional. We had extensive conversation about this at Planning Commission, is because this proposal is an assemblage of properties, and I think the owner of the duplex's willingness to go along with this is if the pending sale goes through, and if it doesn't go through, probably would not want his duplex just zoned for Parking without being connected to any business that's actually generating that parking need. So that's why it's presented this way, even though from the council's larger perspective, you might look at it, you know, or more preferably to just see it as a straight-up conventional rezoning. But there is a reason for why they presented it the way they did, a legitimate reason.
Yes, and Mr. Blanchard, you've seen right through it, you're absolutely right. If you guys know, if you, if any of you know that corner, the two buildings that are about Woodward have zero onsite Parking. So how in the world, in the future, will you ever resolve that issue? Well, we've brought it to the forefront. Hopefully, my client obtains a license. If not, Mr. Blanchard is right, now the whole world knows there is an opportunity for a development inside of Berkeley that'll beautify your community.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we good?
We're good.
All right. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on oh, zero, six, two, zero?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, please read item number nine on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance number oh, seven, twenty, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to add new Article III unsolicited written materials to Chapter Six Advertising of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to regulate the leaving or placement of unsolicited written materials on private property.
Is there a motion to approve oh, oh, seven, two, zero?
So moved. Support.
Moved by Councilmember Henon with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, ma'am. The pack includes not only the text of the ordinance that's being proposed here this evening for first reading, but also a robust email or a robust memo from our city attorney, Mr. Sterren, outlining how and why this is able to come before the city council this evening. A little bit of context on this item. For a while, we have received complaints about specific types of deliveries that happen through, on weekends. Basically, it's a bag full of mostly ads, but with some journalistic endeavors included with them as well. But essentially, you would have somebody who would just, from a vehicle, throw this onto lots. And that's caused concerns and caused heartache from various residents, because it's just become, in their minds, a nuisance to have to go in and basically clean up after a newspaper company. For the longest period, then either any other municipalities that tried to address this through various other ordinance means or through issues with state statute have run into problems. There's a court case out of Kentucky now that gives us some leeway to potentially pass an ordinance to help us address these items. And, Ms. Attorney, I know you've got some further items on this as well.
Well, I think that's right, just briefly, not to repeat or restate, this has been a difficult issue. We don't get a lot of complaints, but we get some, and the complaints we do receive, it's a very upsetting problem for people, and it's not unique to Berkeley. I mean, it's everywhere that receives these publications, they come unsolicited, and they often just get thrown in the yard or on the driveway, and, you know, there, some people read them, some people like me use them to put beneath whatever I'm painting or polishing, and others just, you know, deposit it perhaps straight in the trash can. And for many years, there's been a body of case law out there that has really tied our hands, basically holding this is First Amendment protected speech, it's not litter, it's not blight, it's not a whole lot we can do about it. But as the city manager mentioned, new development in that case law last year. The city of Lexington, Kentucky, developed an ordinance, very similar to the one before you tonight, which was upheld by the United States Court of Appeals for Sixth Circuit. We happen to belong to the Sixth Circuit, so that's binding law in Michigan, and basically upheld that, like Lexington ordinance, as a reasonable time, place, and manner restriction. So there are communities, I believe Dearborn has adopted an ordinance, Ferndale adopted an ordinance very recently. I have crafted this ordinance for you, kind of modeled after the Ferndale and the Lexington, Kentucky ordinances, because it has been an issue that's come before this body in the past. And what this ordinance will do, if adopted, will not ban or prohibit these deliveries, but will control where they can be. They can't any longer just be thrown out onto the driveway or the yard. They basically have to be placed and secured on the porch area or within a holder, a newspaper holder designed for this type of thing, and just not left to be, become blight, or to be blown in the wind, or to be washed into the drain, or whatever. So that's what's presented to you. I did in my memo suggest that if council is inclined to adopt this ordinance, or for tonight's purposes, accept it for first reading, that, you know, some additional thought will be needed to, needs to be given to making sure that we have the resources, the budget, and so on, to actually enforce it, and do we have the, both the wherewithal and the appetite to enforce this type of thing. And then the other thing that I just suggested to you, cautioned you on, this will probably have a significant impact on the publishers and distributors of those things, and so some thought should also be given to how we roll that out and present it to them, both in terms of, should the actual effective date or enforcement date be put down the road a little bit? Should we make some type of direct reach out to these publishers to both advise them of this so that they can do what they have, also to invite them if they, if they have some additional ideas as to how to make this work. We have, I realize I'm going on a little bit, but I just wanted to share this with you. I mean, we have in the past tried to address this problem through dealing directly with, for instance, the publisher of the Free Press Select, which is one of the ones that usually is what people complain about that comes in the pink wrapper and shows up mysteriously on your driveway on Saturday or Sunday mornings. In many cases, they have offered to have an opt-out program, but it's been a mixed bag of results and success with that, because the success of such a program is probably less a function of who at the publisher is keeping this list, and more a function of the, who is the driver, who is driving down the street, just tossing these things out the window, and are they actually looking at a list, or are they just trying to get the route done? And of course, you might expect there's turnover with those people, and you get different results. So this is an effort to kind of ourselves set the controls as to how we want to see things done.
So just, you just made a comment, the sentence, like tossing these out the window, how is it not litter, then?
Because it's free speech.
Oh.
It's got editorial comment and stuff in it that.
They, these, well, but even commercial speech is protected. But if you look at these closely, you will see that although they're chock-full of advertisements, there's always at least one page of actual news or information, or at least something that arguably fits in that category. To protect it from being considered and characterized is just strictly an advertisement.
Okay, thank you.
If you ask the Free Press, they will tell you it's a newspaper, it's not a circular.
Okay. Any discussion from council? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm certainly all for the aim of this, but you touched on kind of my, my biggest concern is in terms of enforceability. You know, we talk a lot up here about code enforcement generally and making sure that we're enforcing it. And so I'd, I'd like to learn a little bit more about that and how we can go about doing that because, you know, to, to create an ordinance just to, in some ways, make us feel a little bit better is not really going to help anybody.
Councilmember Henan?
Um, I can't speak for staff on how they will enforce it. I can speak to how I've read on other communities enforcing this. And it is, if the paper is there, leave it where it sits, call the city, they come out, take a pic, this is how other cities have done it, they will take a picture and then issue the citations. The laws this is modeled on and our law is every single paper that is improperly delivered is a violation. And the, well, the driver didn't listen to us is not a defense. And so I think it would be very easy, once there's a violation, there's probably going to be many violations, those will rack up very quickly and I think the lesson will be learned quite rapidly. My hope would be, my hope with all in code enforcement issues is that they don't happen, but if they do, it's a, you know, it is swift and firm and so that the violators know we aren't kidding around and it gets done. As far as thinking about the publishers and the effect that this will have on them, in this case, I have no sympathy, none at all. I have called them myself, spoke with them, several of them at different levels, and promises on, yes, we're going to honor the opt-out requests, yes, we, you know, we have all these technological solutions to make sure that they are, the opt-out requests are properly honored and, you know, if you opt out, it's going to work. And it just has not worked. They have had, they have been given every opportunity and I think if they simply would have followed the opt-out requests, there would be no interest in this legislation.
Or we can just get everybody a ring doorbell in the city?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks for, for bringing this to us tonight. I do support this, I think it's good. Again, what it doesn't do is prohibit these things. What it does do is just ensure the method in which they're delivered to the resident or homeowner, those kind of things. Maybe I'm an exception to the opt-out rule. Many years ago, at a council meeting, I brought one of those pink bags and shared the 800 number and I had, must have been in my lucky day or something and that, I haven't gotten one since. But I do, and that was a long time ago, but I do think that this is, it's better to just protect the city and our residents rather than requiring everybody to have to call the, the opt-out number anyway. So I think this, this is a good idea. And likewise, I'm not too worried about the, the first violators of this, that's because they'll, yeah, I agree, they would, they'll learn, they'll learn real quick.
That, that is the hope. And we also expect, at least initially, that our enforcement will probably be complaint-driven. We'll get the, we'll get the complaint, we'll go out and investigate. I really don't anticipate that we're going to hire newspaper police to go patrolling the, the city at the crack of dawn every day, although we could, but I would expect it'll be complaint-driven. And then hopefully, as, as, as councilmembers Baker and Henan have mentioned, that once we make our point, we won't have to keep making the point, that we will eventually enforce compliance and then it will become a non-issue for us. Because the opt-out program, although it sounds like it should work, we just haven't enjoyed success with that approach and it continues to be a nuisance for a number of our residents.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I know that, I've been contacted by a number of residents who want something like this. One in particular was quite angry because he sucked up one of those into a snowblower and did major damage to a snowblower, so he was not happy. So I know, and when we had our special meeting that Thursday night, there was one in the audience that wanted to talk about that. So there's, there's concern and I think this is a good way to go about trying to get this problem solved.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
I'll mention my own experience with the opt-out process. Did not, it would work for a while, but did not completely stop until I shared I sat on city council. Then that seemed to be the magic words to get it to work.
Anyone else? Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on oh, zero, seven, two, zero?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda.
Discussion, matter of discussing the status of the proposed downtown development authority design guidelines and the proposed overlay district ordinance.
Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, ma'am. You have before you a well-written memo outlining sort of the current status and what has brought us to this point. If you recall, a while back, the, the DDA and the Planning Commission and the city all worked together on crafting a set of design guidelines that would help codify the, the look and the feel that we would like to see for the aesthetic of our downtown area. The design guidelines were produced, that process produced a fantastic document, but then when the conversation turned to how to implement them, how to put them into effect, we ran into some potential roadblocks. And since that point, we've had some changes in personnel, we've had some changes in leadership at the, the DDA level, and we've just got a, we've got a great team right now that has had a chance to take a look at this and wants to make some recommendations to how to improve the adoption ordinance and the ordinance outlining the design overlay district. In order to do so, that would have to go back through a planning commission-driven process, with the planning commission working with the community development department as well as the DDA to recraft how we want to see this implemented. Some of those recommendations are outlined here with you in the memo this evening. We're joined by an absolutely star-studded cast this evening. Not only do we have Ms. Luto still here from previous items, but our planning commission chair, Kristin Kapilansky, is here, our DDA chair, board chair, Andy Gilbert is here, I saw Andy there earlier, and our Main Street Design Committee Chair, Mateo Pasalakwa, is here as well. So you've got all facets of, of the three entities that would be really having a hand in making sure that the aesthetic that you feel when you enter Berkeley in, in new development and even redevelopment really highlights that traditional Main Street that we'd like to see moving forward, that, that really just well-capitalizes and, and well-codifies the, that kind of who we are as a, as the, our front face to the world.
Thank you. Ms. Luto?
Thank you. Good evening again. So I'd like to reference my January 29th, 2020 memo. There isn't too many items that I've included here that haven't already been mentioned by city manager at Baumgarten. The only thing I want to kind of address is that us going back and trying to look at these with fresh eyes with the new personnel is not intended to hinder or delay any kind of development. We just want to make sure that we are identifying clarity with the city staff's roles and responsibilities, what we can ask of the applicants and making sure that it conforms to the design aesthetic that we want here in Berkeley through the will of the planning commission and city council. So going over the proposed DDA design overlay district, there were five items that I noted that we should look at and I've included those in the memo here. There have been some slight changes based on some conversations that we've had with, over the past couple of days, with council and with the planning commission chair. I don't necessarily want to get mired down into all of those this evening. This is more of a broad overview discussion of, of making sure that we're, we're moving forward in the right direction with these changes. I'd like to answer any questions.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, thanks. I love this kind of stuff. I, I was curious if any of the folks from the DDA had any initial thoughts or comments? Again, not to get into wordsmithing the changes, but just, you know, directionally or thematically, any suggestions or feedback or thumbs-ups-ness from, from our folks here?
Hi, Mateo Pasalakwa. I sit on the DDA board. I just wanted to speak to say that, you know, in general, I support the design guideline process. I think it's one of the more notable accomplishments that the DDA has produced in the last year and a half. And, and I think it complements planning well. I think that one of the challenges that, that the planning commission has is that they don't have a budget, whereas when we do, so we were able to partner on this and kind of work together to develop something. In light of that and some of these proposed changes that you'll consider to how that's implemented and how that's reviewed, I would like to say that I, I do support the recommendation that we change in the report, the creation of another board to review and come up with a recommendation. I think that that, I think in a much larger perfect world, that might work, but for Berkeley, I think that that would actually be a hindrance to moving forward. But that I would recommend, and maybe it was the intent of the language that was provided, that instead of soliciting the input of the DDA director, that the DDA, the DDA director and the community development director put a joint recommendation together to planning so that it's a kind of a 50-50 work together between the board and the community development director to then present planning with a unified recommendation that then planning can do, you know, what it so chooses to do with. But that was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert, do you want to add anything to that?
I don't think there's anything else to really add. I mean, the additional, you know, board I would, don't think is necessary, but to have the two departments work together is perfect. Mateo said it perfectly.
Okay, great, thank you. Ms. Kapilansky, anything you'd like to add?
Just very briefly, the planning commission is, is happy to take a look at the language again and go through this in a little bit more detail, if that's something the council would like to do. We're just very anxious to get the guidelines adopted so that we can put them into practice. There's been a number of instances over the past couple of months where they really would have come in handy. So however they, they are implemented, is fine, it's just a matter of how we, how we get there and how soon we can do it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
And the chair brings up a great point. These are, no matter what the, how the work product is developed, whether it is continuation of the board or whether it's the community development, this goes to the planning commission. And the planning commission is the, the body that really handles it, takes into practice in the site plan process. So I know there's previously concerns about this taking, potentially being taken out of the hands of residents. That's absolutely not going to be the case. This still goes to planning commission, who has the direct interface with the, with, with an applicant through the site plan process or whatever the application may be.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from council? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I think that Director Shuto has got some excellent comments in here. I, I think the, the next step is to take this document and merge it with what we've got before, come up with a, a new document, what the planning commission should do for us, that embodies all these things, such as removing the board. And I think everybody's in agreement with that. So I think that we're at a point now where we should start moving this forward.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, um, you know, one of my chief concerns was that the guidelines would be mandatory, and I think some of them are too vague, to be mandatory, but I do want to give the planning commission some tools to be able to use them in some discretionary fashion. I like the design guidelines themselves, they, they are very good. It was the ordinance that, you know, I had some difficulty with. I do think over time that if there are parts of the guidelines that we really like and do want to make mandatory, that we should tighten them up and then bring them into our zoning code to make them permanent. One question I had from Ms. Shuto is, do we have any idea on the time and cost that it might add for an applicant that has to go through the proposed review process?
Well, the, the fee that I alluded to in my, in my memo here was really if the design review board was going to continue to be the mechanism by which these, these plans were, were reviewed. To have another board to get them all together, the administration cost, that's really what the, the fee was going to be reserved for. In, in light of the fact that we are not going to be pursuing that any longer, then the review fee would be eliminated and, kind of getting into process a little bit here, the, the review board component would be eliminated and the DDA director, the chair, whoever's acting on behalf of the DDA, myself would compa, be composed of like the review board as it will. And then we would make a joint recommendation to, to the planning commission. That's how I've kind of foreseen things kind of moving, moving forward in this direction. If there's any kind of discrepancy or if there's a tie in, in any of these situations, I would recommend that like the building official would be the tiebreaker in that, in those instances. But these would all be kind of taken, be done administratively. That way, there isn't a review board meeting, then the planning commission meeting, there wouldn't be these monthly delays for, for what might be a simple project, but we can get it done much faster.
So to restate it, it doesn't sound like it would be any additional cost or additional time from the applicant's point of view?
We're trying to eliminate that, yes. Streamline the process a little bit easier.
If I may, the intention, as is being proposed here, is to streamline the process so it fits into the, the current thing and will not be an additional layer of, of bureaucracy or, or delay for the applicant and as well as an opportunity for the city to, I guess, inject its thoughts and comments and feedback at a very early point, hopefully to help the developer design a, a product that will be consistent with those guidelines. So rather than be a delay or hindrance or additional cost item, if, if done as we hope it will, it will actually do the opposite and will be a, will, will, will more efficiently reach a quality, an approvable project more quickly.
Excellent. Thank you.
And the recommendation would be then to, to the planning commission, who would then make the final decision. But we would, we would be the ones to do more of the heavy lifting of reviewing these plans and making sure they comply with the DDA guidelines. Otherwise, a planning commission meeting could last a lot longer.
Thank you. Any, anything else from anyone? Councilmember Price?
So do I understand correctly that, Owen, thank you so much for the work on this, especially the recommendation to remove the, the design review board. I, I'm absolutely in support of it. Do I understand correctly that you're interested in being a joint report with you, the DDA director and the building official, that all three of you would make that recommendation to planning commission?
It would be more the community development director, myself, and the DDA director. We would act as the, the advisory, I guess, our own committee, I'm not sure how would we want to phrase that. But if there were instances where we didn't see eye to eye and we needed a third neutral party, then we could bring in the building official to kind of act as that neutral third party, if need be. I don't foresee that happening, but, you know, it's there if we need it.
Great. And then I guess my next question, I don't know if this is for a council or the city attorney, but do we need to provide an appeals process if the applicant is concerned with the decision of?
I think it would be the same appeals process that applies now with respect to various development approval, site plan approval and, and so on, that the ordinance, our zoning ordinance currently provides for an appeal to the zoning board of appeals. So we think the, there is an appeal process, but the, the existing process should work for this as well.
Great, thank you.
This would really go hand in hand with the site plan approval process, so no difference than when something like that happens. I make, I write a review letter, make a recommendation to planning commission, and this would be a component of that. So whether my recommendation would be to approve, approve with conditions, maybe postpone or table an item until some things could be worked out, those would be things that we would try to work with the applicant to get to a position where their, their, their plan, their proposal could be approved without, without too many modifications from the planning commission.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you so much, Ms. Luto. We're moving on to communications. Ms. Mitchell, help me out here.
Councilmember Henan?
All right. Recently, I attended some training at SEMCOG on how to effectively communicate our needs to our state legislatures. It was a excellent class and I highly recommend it if it's ever offered again. It was an excellent class, and I highly recommend it if it's ever offered again. On the Zoning Board of Appeals, at their last meeting, they denied a request for, here's some of this plain language, on two new homes on a lots split to be built closer than code allows. But they, in a second hearing, they allowed a second-floor addition that is closer than code allows, and they allowed that because the first floor was already built before our current codes and closer, so it was just going up and not really going out any further than before. But I am pleased that that issue was discovered by our building official when he was doing an inspection, and he saw that they had violated the permit that they were, they had applied for, and immediately gave a stop-work order, and that's why they came before the ZBA. So I'm very glad to see that process working. The ZBA, also, almost every member attended a recent training session at the county last week, and I really want to thank them for their dedication in doing that. And their next meeting will be Monday, February 10, at 7:00 PM at City Hall. Tree Board, they are continuing their discussion on a public tree inventory, and their meeting is Monday, February 10, also, 7:00 PM at the library. Tomorrow, Tuesday, February 4, I have my Talk with Dennis event, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the library. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, for Planning Commission, we obviously saw a few other items here before us tonight, so the next Planning Commission meeting will be at 7:00 PM on February 25, here in the council chambers at City Hall. The EAC, the Environmental Advisory Committee, met on the 23rd while our special meeting was actually in progress, so I wasn't able to go to that. But the next meeting will be on February 20, at 6:30 PM at Public Safety, the second-floor conference room. In conjunction with that, the EAC, along with the Public Library, will present a workshop with MI Rain Barrel for residents to purchase rain barrels at a discount, $65. You must preorder the rain barrel ahead of the event, and you can pick it up there and get a tutorial about how to assemble it and installation, everything like that. You can go to mirainbarrel.com/signup, and the event itself will be February 18, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM in the library. So that's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to say that we had a very good winter fest with very little winter, but we had a lot of happy kids, and they were running around, and decorated cookies and having a real good time, so that was a success. Also, I attended the Off to the Races event put on by the Berkeley Education Foundation, and that was a good fundraiser for that organization, and I thank all the volunteers that worked on both of those projects, because I know a lot of work was put into both of them, so... And the other big event is a liaison of the chamber, we attended the Chamber ribbon cutting at Green Lantern Pizza at 5:30 tonight, so the pizza place is open and it smells good.
Thank you. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you. So thank you, Councilmember Baker, for sharing with me that a recent Gallup poll found that in 2019, Americans spent more of their leisure time at libraries than they did going to movie theaters, sporting events, museums, concerts, or casinos. That was pretty exciting. The library board met, and we find that circulation of books and all materials, but especially books, continues to grow at Berkeley Public Library. There are robust programs for all ages. A couple of upcoming programs of interest, on Tuesday, February 11, at 6:30, there will be the History of Oakland County. Jim Craft of the Oakland County Historical Commission will deliver a talk about the 1877 book called The History of Oakland County, and provide a cultural context for that book. You do need to register in advance for that program, you can do that on the website or by calling the library. Tuesday, February 18, that Rain Barrel Workshop, the library is grateful for the Environmental Advisory Committee for partnering with them on that program. On Saturday, February 22, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, the Friends of the Library will be hosting a bake sale, with all the proceeds going to support library programs and events. They also organize the book sale, and they currently have a survey up on their Facebook page to get resident feedback on the book sale, to continue to improve that program. I wanted to thank everyone for coming out and participating in my community conversation a few weeks ago at the library. Had a great conversation with eight parents while their kids played in the newly renovated Storytime Room, it was fantastic. The next community conversation, date and time still to be determined, it will be within the next month, and it will be at the Community Center shortly following this senior fitness class there. So geared more towards seniors, but as usual, residents of all ages are welcome. And then finally, I wanted to thank the Berkeley Schools and Royal Oak Schools for hosting an impactful day of service for, in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Our community is stronger because of the education and service experience that that program provided, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick notes as well. Our Downtown Development Authority, DDA, I'd like to spotlight two of our Board members, and we saw two of them here tonight. There's two others that I'd just like to give a quick shout-out to. We have two student members from Berkeley High that attend the Board meetings and participate in the conversations and do special projects, Maggie Gabel and Eli Hurwitz. Good news for them is that they're graduating, will be moving on to the next stage of their journey. Bad news for the Board, but it's also good news for the Board, because they'll be getting new students to participate. So an extra shout-out to Maggie and Eli for all their contributions these last several years to the DDA, and for a really good write-up that they've put together about what the Board is and the role of the student member of the Board, and how they can be active members and helping shape and advance our downtown. So that's super cool. And for more information on what's coming up in the downtown with events and activities, please visit downtownberkeley.com. Our Technology Advisory Committee met with the Historical Committee to propose and discuss some new technologies. So a lot of what the Historical Committee does is preserve and protect historical documents and photos and archival materials, some of which are not conveniently shaped to fit on a conventional scanner. We have really old newspapers and old, you know, blueprints and things that are difficult to manipulate. So together, those committees have put forth some recommendations about some more advanced technologies that are appropriate for museums, and so they will be going through a voting process to allocate funds from the museum's funds to purchase some of that equipment. So I'm really pleased to see these committees working together and helping achieve really cool objectives for that. And as a nice segue to Historical Committee, I mentioned this last time, but now it's almost here, and what I'm speaking about, of course, is the Kit Homes display. So you may or may not know that back in the day, people could order a house from a Sears catalog. You know, you look through the catalog, "Well, that looks nice, yeah, I'll order one of those." And have all these boxes delivered to your parcel, and you get to put them together. Berkeley actually has one of the largest distribution or assemblage of these Kit Homes. We have 54 of them in the city, and you can see and learn about each of those right over there in the museum, adjacent to our council chambers here. There's photos of the home as it looks today, as well as the advertisement from the catalog of here's what it looked like, and all that kind of cool stuff. And in some cases, we even have the actual blueprints that came in the box, and it's a little bit more complicated than an IKEA instruction thing these days, you know? Insert wall A into ceiling B. Not something quite like that. But it's fascinating to see that that stuff is there. And we've gotten some great contributions from several collectors, even I met a fellow, before the meeting, I was in the museum checking in on the progress, and there's a very experienced gentleman from Royal Oak that's passionate about these things, and he's contributed some of the additional archival material to supplement what we have. Now, it will be, this display will be finished by this week's Wednesday, so just a couple of days from now, and you can come and see this for yourself on most Sundays from 2 until 4, and Wednesdays from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And finally, it was Patrick Young who once said, "The trouble with weather forecasting is that it's right too often for us to ignore it, and it's wrong too often for us to rely on it." Now, yesterday was Groundhog's Day, and my understanding is the cute little critter did not see his shadow, which foretells an early spring. And so I just wanted to offer that please be, continue to be careful out there in these changing weather conditions. You know, it was 50-something degrees yesterday, and I've heard that people were out golfing. And later this week, we're supposed to get snow again, so it's certainly, you know, this climate sure is changing here. And as we experience that, please continue to be safe, not only for your family, but for other families. Take care of your sidewalks, take care of your driveways. People do a lot of walking, and our canine friends, too, would certainly appreciate a safe path to travel, so keep that in mind and stay safe and enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Baumgarten?
Certainly. City Hall will be closed this Friday, the 7th, for staff training. We're actually doing an organization-wide training, it's part of our bi-monthly series that we've launched for 2020. And we also got a chance recently to send two of our staff members to the Michigan Municipal Executives Annual Winter Conference. We also have trains coming up at the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as Department of Public Works. I say all that to thank this council for providing staff with the resources and allow us to continue to invest in, and making sure that our workforce here is not only one of the best in the area, but professional, courteous, emphasis on public service, and then overall healthy as well. We couldn't do any of these things without the support that we get from this council and the resources that you guys have given us, so it is greatly appreciated, and it's being put into effect, so you'll see absolutely the fruits of the labor there. And speaking of the fruits of our labor, the Recreation Department did put together a fantastic winter fest. The Baumgarten household was under quarantine still, so we did not get to go, but it was great seeing the pictures, hearing the staff describe, like all the new people they got to meet, and it continues to be one of our biggest events, even topping Summer Fest. So Teresa and her team does a fantastic job. They actually were, many of them were away at a conference, learning how to continue to make such a good thing better, so well done to that team as well. And then before the next time we meet again, we'll have an election, and so if you have any questions about the election, feel free to reach out to the Clerk's office. We are operating under new rules, as passed by last November, so there, if you have any questions, not only is Victoria ready to go to answer them in detail, but Gina Harold as well, our deputy clerk, extremely knowledgeable team, will make sure that your voice is heard.
Thank you. Mr. Sterren?
Yes, just very quickly, I look forward to attending this Friday, the annual winter conference of the State Bureau of Michigan's Local Government Attorneys section. It's being held in Dearborn at the Henry Hotel, it's a nice place. They always have a very topical agenda, and attorney, municipal attorneys, my peer group, come from, you know, across the state, so it's an excellent opportunity to discuss issues of common interest, and then, of course, my favorite part, they always put on a magnificent lunch buffet spread. It's worth the price, worth the registration fee right there.
Thank you. We're good. So I am going to just jump on the winter fest bang-wang in for a moment, if I may. In addition to everything that's been said, it was really nice to see Councilmembers Gavin and Henan and Blanchard there as well. In addition to all the hard work from the Parks and Recreation Department, Teresa and her team, I also want to thank the sponsors, because this is a free event for our community, and I don't know if people know that. It was just so heartwarming to see all the families out enjoying all the activities. There were so many things to do, inside activities, outside activities, and I only got to go for a little bit, because I work every Saturday, but it was really uplifting, and it was great to see all the smiling faces and to see people actually out interacting with one another, families together. So I really do love that event, it's a lot of fun for the entire community. Also, Parks and Recreation is hosting a Parents Night Out this Friday, February 7, from 6 to 10, I'm sorry, 6 to 9:00 PM, for children ages four to 10. If you want more information on that or any other Parks and Rec activity, you can call the Parks and Rec Department or go online to berkeley.maxgalaxy.net. They are also hosting a vacation camp, February 13 and 14, and 17 and 18, and register by calling Parks and Rec or berkeley.maxgalaxy.net. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned by Councilmember Price.
Support?
Support from Councilmember Henan. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The February 3, 2020, meeting of the 38th Council has been adjourned.
Congratulations.
Thanks.